Start in a second. Let me just first say what a pleasure it is to see everybody in person. It really is. It's been too long. It is good seeing you. I don't know. I don't recognize everybody outside of a little box these days. But let me, we're going to start our meeting. So this meeting of the City University of New York's Board of Trustees is now called to order. Everyone, yeah, mute your phones because CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this meeting live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu/livestream and the CUNY Board of Trustees website. I now move that this meeting convene an executive session pursuant to Article 7, Section 105 of the Public Officers' Law to discuss matters pertaining to personnel, investigations, litigation, and real estate. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, we are in executive session. The board will reconvene in public session following this executive session.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. You're good.
Well, we can wait.
Ten, you got ten. Eleven, you're good.
All right. I move to reconvene our public meeting. Do I have a second? Okay, we're now back in public session. As I started out kind of an executive session, it's good to see everybody and it's great to see all my colleagues. It's great to see some of our presidents and members of the Chancellery. So it is great to be back in person. On Monday, October 17th, 2022, the board held its Manhattan Borough hearing and public hearing chaired by trustee Henry Berger. Trustee Berger was joined by trustees Vazani and Domboya and members of the Chancellery. Individuals were invited to testify in person at the Graduate Center or remotely via Zoom. Six people testified remotely and 39 individuals testified in person. Speakers expressed concerns over the recently announced development Spark Kips Bay, including loss of student housing, distance from Hunter's main campus, and the fate of the 74th Street Hunter College Sciences and Health Professions property. Members of the PSC encouraged the university to increase the number of full-time faculty and increase adjunct salaries. They also expressed concerns over infrastructure and space issues at various campuses. Professors from multiple CUNY colleges also expressed concerns about the university's proposed budget, which allocated a disproportionate amount of funding for lecture hires over professional staff hires. Members of the CUNY School of Labor and Urban Studies urged the university to establish a labor museum and also increase the number of classrooms and public space at the school. As always, a summary of the hearing, including testimony, was circulated to the trustees and the chancellor's staff and posted to the trustees' website. Let me acknowledge the passing of former trustee Patricia Carrie Stewart, who died on August 10th at the age of 94. She was appointed vice chair of the board by Governor Hugh L. Carey in 1976. Ms. Stewart is also the vice chair of the board at Cornell University, her alma mater, as well as a member of the visiting committee of the Graduate School of Business at Harvard University. Her business career started as a foreign correspondent for the Irving Trust Company. She later became a partner and then president of the New York Stock Exchange firm Buckner &amp; Company. She was one of the first women to head a Wall Street firm. She subsequently was vice president for finance and administration at the Edna McConnell Clark Foundation. She also served on the Board of Trustees at Trans World Airlines, F.W. Woolworth &amp; Company, Continental Corporation, Boyd &amp; Corporation, Morton Norwich, Inc., Bankers Trust Company, CBS Corporation, and New York City's Financial Services Corporation. Our current vice chair, Sandra Wilken, has been very busy these days. Earlier this month, at the New York State Annual MWBE Conference, Vice Chair Sandra Wilken was presented with a lifetime achievement award on behalf of Governor Hochul and the New York State Empire Development Corporation for her advocacy on the mission and work in support of New York's MWBEs. Sandra, I've had the opportunity to work with you in the MWBE space for a long time now. I'm not going to mention how long because I'll start to date the both of us, but congratulations. Well-deserved honor, well-deserved. Also last month, Vice Chair Wilken was asked to bring greetings to the MTA's Diversity Committee. She also attended a program during UN Week called African on Purpose with Her Majesty Queen Diamba, DMB, who's a CUNY alum and other dignitaries. The meetings were to discuss in small groups and shed light on the challenges and success of sustainability projects, including the African Resilience Plan, Hunger Safety Net Program, business transformation, innovation, and digitalization, re-engineer financial business models, to name a few. And this week, she'll bring greetings on behalf of the board at the opening session of the Association of Community College Trustees Congress. Trustee Myra Lenaris Garcia will also be participating in a panel during the Congress entitled Building a First-Year Program for Sustainability and Institutional Priority, where she'll join others from Bronx Community Colleges to discuss the college's successful first-year initiative. I'm also pleased to congratulate our student trustee Salamatu Domboya, who I understand has been re-elected, so congratulations to that. And she will serve with us for another year. It is great having you here. You bring an important voice to this board. I'm glad that you'll be here for another year. I'll also note that she was recently invited by Vice President Harris to attend a reproductive rights discussion with student leaders from across the country at the White House. Excellent. Several trustees have also taken part in investiture ceremonies as well. Trustee Wilken at Gutman, trustee Ferrer at Lehman, and I will say I was proud to be at the investiture of the new president at Medgar Evers College. I have no doubt that there will be several more to come. I know that my colleagues and I will be there. So again, let me thank each of you for the work that you do. And I don't think that anybody understands how much time we put in. I'm going to ask that our salaries be doubled. So that, I'm sure they're double zero. Well, that's still zero. Okay, so, but let me thank all of you for the work that you do. Trustees will also be participating in the upcoming 2023 Aspen Prize visits at Kingsborough and Hostos, who have been selected as two of the 10 finalists for this distinguished honor. We look forward to those visits. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge that the secretary of the board has been named vice chair of the Association of Governing Boards Board Professionals Leadership Group after serving for two years as the chair of the programs committee. Congratulations, Gail. Well done. And I've also joined the board of AGB, so just, and they're paying me twice what I'm getting paid here. Let me now ask the chancellor for his report.
Chair Thompson, trustees, presidents, and vice chancellor, it is great to see all of you at this first meeting of the '22-'23 academic year and the first in-person board meeting since February 3rd of 2020. It's been a busy four months since we last met on Zoom, and I'm pleased to have much to share with you about the significant progress we made in shaping our university for the post-pandemic era in New York City. First, I want to begin by welcoming deans Sudha Sethi of the CUNY School of Law, Graciela Moschowski of the Newmark School of Journalism, and Darrell Byrne of the Macaulay Honors College, all of whom are starting their first academic year in their new roles, and also Vice Chancellor Elsebio Formoso, our chief information officer, who started with us in the summer. So welcome to all of you. We're quickly nearing the midpoint of a semester that opened at an exciting and promising time for our university, thanks in large part to the historic support for CUNY and public higher education provided by our leaders in Albany. From our additional 250 new faculty, $1 billion in additional capital funding for much-needed facility improvements, support to expand access to childcare, and several significant workforce initiatives and programs that have been announced this fall with our city and state funding partners, we feel stronger than ever about our ability to fulfill the commitment we have to our students and to our city. I'd like to start with one big and exciting partnership that I had the honor of joining Governor Hochul and Mayor Adams for the announcement a week and a half ago. With historic investment from the state and the city, we are transforming the Brookdale Campus into a $1.6 billion public health and education hub that will be the first of its kind in our state. The new center will be called the Science Park and Research Campus Kips Bay, Spark Kips Bay for short. It would house Hunter School of Nursing and School of Health Professions, Hunter and Hunter Science Research Labs, the CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Public Policy, and the Board of Manhattan Community College Health Programs. It would also include a new Department of Education High School, creating a talent pipeline that will take students from high school to college to career. And it would also house biotech companies and public health institutions. Spark Kips Bay will turn an entire block into a state-of-the-art teaching and commercial campus that will cultivate the next generation of New York's scientific research and healthcare workforce. It would create thousands of good jobs for all New Yorkers, including many for the thousands of CUNY students enrolled in our health, life sciences, and human service programs, and it will generate an estimated $25 billion in economic impact for the city over the next 30 years. Of course, a project as ambitious as this one brings its share of logistical challenges. The Brookdale Campus has student dorms that will be vacated for construction, raising concerns for residents. We do not envision closing the Brookdale Dorms before the end of the next academic year, 2023-24, and that is at its earliest. CUNY will assist students identify dorm options if needed once construction begins, in addition to working with the University Student Senate in exploring housing alternatives for students CUNY-wide. As you know, this fall, we launched a new partnership with the city, CUNY Reconnect, to re-enroll thousands of the many New Yorkers who have earned some college credits but left school before completing a degree. The early news of this program is very positive. This fall, we re-enroll some 12,000 students who have stopped out, most of them during the pandemic, and about one quarter of those students were engaged through the new, were engaged to the new program and qualified for a Reconnect Completion Grant. Reconnect has already performed outreach to more than 50,000 people who were once enrolled at CUNY and did not finish a degree, and has engaged with over 7,000 of those students. We thank Speaker Adams and the City Council for their partnership in creating and funding an initiative that can help so many New Yorkers and the city itself. This last week was National Transfer Student Week, and the presidents of BMCC and Baruch celebrated the launch of the BMCC-Baruch Business Academy, an innovative model that provides a pathway to transfer students to obtain their associate's and bachelor's degrees in business. These students can smoothly move from BMCC to Baruch's Sikklin School of Business and then onward to career success in finance, IT, and other industries. My congratulations to Presidents Monroe and Wu for this initiative. An estimated 10% of CUNY's undergraduates are pursuing their education while raising children, and our commitment to supporting them with a range of programs and services has been fortified since the pandemic. Our childcare centers on 17 campuses are the centerpiece of that support, and I was happy to visit the Early Child Center at Bronx Community College last Tuesday to highlight that Governor Hochul has allocated $4.8 million in additional funds to CUNY this year to expand these vital services. We also kicked off the academic year with Governor Hochul's announcement of the expansion of the state's TAP program for the first time ever to include part-time students. About 75,000 part-time CUNY and SUNY students, taking between six and 11 credits, are newly eligible to receive financial support from the state, which committed $150 million to the program. The boost is transformative for students who are balancing jobs, family, and other obligations that prevent them from taking on a full-time course load. We also started the year with the news that a federal government, that the federal government will cancel up to 20,000 in student loan debt for millions of Americans, a move that can bring relief to thousands of CUNY, of current CUNY students and graduates. As you probably know, a federal appeals court on Friday temporarily halted the program, but the application process is still open, as the U.S. Education Department can still review applications, though they cannot process them. I urge all who have outstanding federal help on their graduate and graduate loans, including current students whose loan was distributed before June 30th of this year, to apply. As you know, the federal debt forgiveness follows our move last year to use stimulus funds to erase $100 million in unpaid tuition and fees for more than 57,000 CUNY students. We are also closely monitoring the legal developments on the DACA program front. For now, individuals with DACA status can continue renewing their status, but the most recent ruling continues to block new applicants from being granted DACA status. The urgency for Congress to act this year is higher than it's ever been. With or without DACA, CUNY is committed to supporting all our students regardless of immigration status. We have been communicating to students the supports available to them, including the services of CUNY Citizenship Now, so I urge anybody who's eligible to renew their DACA status to do so quickly. I want to acknowledge some of the measures we have put in place to address concerns about antisemitism in some of our CUNY campuses. This is a manifestation of a national problem that has been notable notably in the rise in New York, where arrests for antisemitic crimes are up 45% this year. We announced an action program, and I want to outline three important components of that action program. The first one is that CUNY and seven of our campuses are among a dozen institutions nationwide that are part of Hillol's International's expansion of its National Campus Climate Initiative, which battles antisemitism and builds positive and safe college environments for all students. The partnership is supported by a generous grant from the Carol and Milton Pritley Foundation, always a staunch supporter and good friend to this university. We are also allocating $750,000 for events and programs that counter antisemitism and other forms of religious and ethnic bigotry in our campuses, and to fund the expansion of DEI trainings incorporating antisemitism. We are also developing a system-wide webpage for reporting campus incidents, including antisemitism, to facilitate and standardize reporting. This central page will connect to the individual campus reporting site and would also be shared with the college president or dean, who will be required to report on these cases on a semi-annual basis and develop policy and training as needed. I also would like to update the board on the progress of our Black Race and Ethnic Studies Initiative, or BRESE. Earlier this year, the BRESE Council solicited proposals for ethnic students, ethnic studies-related projects from across CUNY. Over 500 proposals were submitted, and 126 were awarded grants totaling $1.8 million to advance the goals of BRESE, thanks to the general support of the Mellon Foundation. They include ideas for more inclusive curricula, improved campus climate, increased student research opportunities, and several other areas. Faculty at 22 colleges receive awards, and their ideas mark a pivotal step in our goal to transform ethnic studies across our university. To round out my report, in September, at the Association for Better New York, I outlined a vision for a new CUNY that helps create opportunities for all New Yorkers, especially those who are underrepresented in career fields most in demand. No institution is better positioned to live New York than CUNY because of the size and the diversity of our talent pool. I want to thank Chair Thompson, Vice Chair Wilken, and trustees Sunshine and Domboya for attending the APNE presentation. My speech featured three new announcements. The first one, the CUNY Inclusive Economy Initiative, which is a 16-million public-private partnership that Mayor Adams and I announced that will embed industry specialists on CUNY campuses, expand career and academic advising, and give our students more opportunities for paid internships. The aim is to connect 80% of CUNY's graduates to careers by the end of the decade. The second one is an expansion of green technology workforce development at six CUNY colleges, thanks to a $4 million investment from the New York City Economic Development Corporation. And the third is the next phase of our successful CUNY upskilling program, which provides free or low-cost courses in growing fields like healthcare, tech, construction, and marketing. There will be more to come, and we see the whole city as our partner in this transformation. We will continue to seek collaboration that benefits our students and the city, and to urge leaders across the system to believe in CUNY and to make it real by investing in CUNY. This brings me to the conclusion of my first report of the academic year. I'm looking forward to keeping you posted on the progress on the initiatives that I've highlighted today and to sharing news of the many others that we have in the pipeline. With that, Chair Thompson, I am happy to answer any questions from the members of the board.
We're going straight into our agenda. Let's turn, now, thank you, chancellor. Thank you so much. And let's now turn to items requiring a vote today. Item number one, the draft minutes for the regular board meeting and executive session and June 27, 2022 board meeting, and the special board meeting of August 23, 2022. I'd like to move item number one. We have a second. Any discussion on the minutes? All right, we're going to move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved. Item number two, Committee on Governance. Committee on Governance Chair Sunshine isn't available, isn't here right now, so I'm going to move the following item. City University of New York Resolution to Authorize Members of the Board of Trustees Who Experience an Extraordinary Circumstance to Attend Meetings by Video Conference Under Certain Conditions and to Adopt Procedures Governing Member Video Conferencing Pursuit to Public Officers' Law 103-A. Like to move this item. Do I have a second? Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
So because of the hour, I'm going to step in for the chair, so if that's okay with everyone.
Kurt's for me.
Okay, so, item 3A is a resolution to authorize a spending plan for supplemental support under the American Rescue Plan.
All right.
You've got to move it.
I'd like to move item 3A. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3B is a resolution to approve the planned use of $40 million in non-recurring strategic funds.
I'd like to move that item. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3C is a resolution to authorize an enterprise-wide service agreement, contract with Gartner, Inc., for subscription-based technology research consulting and related services.
I'd like to move item 3C. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item? All those in favor will vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3D is a resolution to authorize an enterprise-wide unified support contract with Microsoft Corporation.
I'd like to move item 3D. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3E is a resolution to authorize a contract with New York State Industries for the Disabled, NISID, for the provision of ongoing custodial and maintenance services at two leased buildings of Ostos Community College at 590 Exterior Street, Bronx, New York, for the CUNY Language Immersion Program, and at 560 Exterior Street, Bronx, New York, for the Proud Building in the Bronx Terminal Market.
I'd like to move item 3E. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3F is a resolution to authorize a contract with Dreamland Security Services, Inc., to provide unarmed guard services to New York City College of Technology.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Those, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3G is a resolution to authorize a contract with Otis Elevator Company to provide elevator maintenance services at LaGuardia Community College.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second? Discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3H is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second? Discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3I is a resolution to appoint Catherine J. Cousins as vice president of Advancement and Communications at York College.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3J is a resolution to appoint Carmen Huertas Noble as senior associate dean of clinical programs at the CUNY School of Law.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3K is a resolution to appoint Jennifer Jarvis as vice president of student development and enrollment management at Queens College.
I'd like to move item 3K. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3L is a resolution to appoint Katora Parker as vice president of institutional advancement at John Jay College.
I'd like to move item 3L. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3M is a resolution to appoint Sanjay Ramdath as vice president of enrollment management at the Borough of Manhattan Community College.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3N is a resolution to appoint Billy Gastick Rosato as provost and senior vice president for academic affairs at LaGuardia Community College.
I'd like to move item 3N. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 3N is approved.
Item 3O is a resolution to appoint Kenneth Torino as vice president of finance and administration at the CUNY Graduate Center.
I'd like to move item 3O. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3P is a resolution to authorize the Borough of Manhattan Community College to enter into a contract with Capstone On-Campus Management, LLC, for the residential housing of Borough of Manhattan Community College students, a project administrator, and a residential advisor at the Towers at City College of New York.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3Q is a resolution to authorize a procurement of bar exam preparation courses and a waiver of tuition and fees for the third-year law school students enrolled in such courses at the CUNY School of Law.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second? Discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
We now move to the Committee on Education.
Congratulations.
Policy. Thank you.
Well done, Chairman Ferrer.
Item number four, the Committee on Education Policy. Item 4A is a resolution to award the Asali Angel Ajani with early tenure at the City College of New York with an application of bylaw 6.2.C2.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 4B is a resolution requesting the approval of the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 4B is approved.
Item 4C is a resolution requesting approval of the actions in the curriculum and academic policy dashboard. Sorry.
I'd like to move. A little tongue-tied.
I know.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. right, we'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
We are now moving to item five, the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Item 5A is a resolution to request the City University Construction Fund to execute new requirements contracts for plumbing services related to university capital projects.
I'd like to move item. I'd like to move item 5A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 5B is a resolution to request the City University Construction Fund to execute new requirements contracts for roofing services related to university capital projects.
I'd like to move item 5B. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 5B is approved.
Item 5C is a resolution to request the City University Construction Fund to execute new requirements contracts for window services related to university capital projects.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 5C is approved.
Item 5D is a resolution to request the City University Construction Fund to execute requirements contracts for real estate leasing representative services.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 5E is a resolution to request the City University Construction Fund to contract for facilities condition assessment.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 5F is a resolution to authorize the Colden Theater HVAC dehumidification project at Queens College.
I'd like to move item 5F. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 5G is a resolution to request the City University Construction Fund to execute new requirements contracts for construction manager build services related to university capital projects.
I'd like to move item 5G. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
We now move to item six, the Committee on Advancement and External Affairs. Item 6A is a resolution to accept an anonymous donation to the City University of New York on October 3, 2022.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 6B is a resolution requesting the naming of the John Vavilakwa Student Athlete Hall of Fame at Queensborough Community College.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Okay, well, now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 6C is a resolution requesting the naming of the Paul Rothman Classroom at Baruch College.
I'd like to move item 6C. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 6D is a resolution to accept a gift from the estate of Mary Carlucci to Hunter College.
I'd like to move item 6D. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item?
Nope.
We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Items 6E through 6K are resolutions requesting namings at the Leon and Toby Cooperman Library at Hunter College.
I'd like to move items 6E through 6K. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
We now move to item seven, the Committee on Student Affairs. Item 7A is a resolution to appoint the Council of Presidents Subcommittee on Athletics to administer the University Athletic Conference and amend the manual of general policy to codify the transition of administration of the University Athletic Conference from the Office of Student Affairs to the Council of Presidents.
I'd like to move item 7A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item eight is a resolution to authorize a memorandum of understanding by and among the City University of New York, the City of New York, the New York City Economic Development Corporation, and the State of New York, excuse me, relating to the creation of a Brookdale Campus CUNY State-City Development Plan for a Life Sciences, Public Health, and Healthcare Education Hub.
I would like to move item eight. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Yes.
I would just like to say again that the students are really looking forward to a big collaboration with CUNY Central on how we can figure out our problem of having affordable housing, dormitory spaces for the students as an alternative, but also revisiting CUNY's culture on affordable housing and dormitories in general.
And Selma, too, let me thank you for your work on this and for your concern and involvement in representing the students and representing them well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? Did I move this? Yes, we did. Okay, all right. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. There being no further business, I ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting, or I make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.